There we go.
Are we expecting Darby for this one? Are we expecting Darby for this one?
Well, that's a good question. I'm pretty sure she's gonna tune in for city council meeting, but I'm not, I cannot guarantee her attendance at this one.
I can just text her.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we do, right? It's different.
I'm just wondering if we waited for her.
It's different. I mean, you have fewer people to worry about for a quorum.
Well, I think, yeah, it's that if there's the council president acting as mayor presiding, it'll count towards quorum. Whereas for this board, even though Colette's running the meeting, she still counts. So we still have the number four, which is what we need. So I think we're good.
I thought Tura was three.
No, no, it can't be three.
Yeah, you're right. That doesn't make sense.
So i- if you say it's six or you say it's seven, the quorum's still gonna be four, but it's our.
You're in a position to vote if need be.
But only if need be, right?
Hmm.
No, I think Tura is different than council.
Yeah, Tura is different. I don't think you have to vote to break a tie.
You mean, I don't have to not vote to not break a tie?
Yes.
I can vote for things that are not ties.
I think you can.
Uh huh, but not the mayor.
I think maybe not the mayor.
Okay.
I'm not sure about that. It's.
Well, she's not texting me back.
And we don't necessarily have anything that would require a decision. We wanted to discuss a number of items and get your direction. And so I think either way, we're in a position for you to consider the agenda and to move forward with our presentations.
Sounds good. Okay. So it is six oh three and I will call the Talent Urban Renewal Agency General Meeting of December sixth, twenty twenty-three to order. Roll call, please.
Board member Clark.
Here.
Board member Panemirov.
Here.
Board member Greider.
Here.
Board member Pestezo is not present. Board member Byers is not present. Vice Chair Parry Miller.
Here.
And Chair Ayers Flood is not present. Vice Chair, Parry Miller, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Hector. Item number two is speakers heard on non-agenda items. Staff, have you heard that we have any speakers?
We have no speakers for this particular meeting.
Okay. We have two attendees, but I do not see anyone raising their hands. Um, so moving on, item number three is the consent calendar. Three point one is financial packet for September twenty twenty-three and three point two is financial packet for October. Staff report?
Yes, ma'am. So our finance director, Tessa Delain, is here to go over the financials for both September and October. And as I stated at the last meeting, what we would like to do tonight is give you a perspective as to where Tura is financially, what might assist you in giving us some direction under four point two, where we talk about the agency's financial direction going forward. So I'm going to let Tessa talk about the two packets that are in your agenda. And then if you have questions, either she or I will respond to them.
Okay. Um, how would you like me to proceed?
Um, well, I mean, what I remember is just that we hadn't had these for the last couple of meetings, which is why I think they're a little bit later. But I mean, if, do folks have questions about these items?
You know, I just, I think a walkthrough with the, from the most recent one, and if Tessa could just kind of highlight the things that she thinks that were important, are important for us to track on. I'd love that.
Sure. I don't have a lot of context as to how this, the budget was put together for Tura. I've been pretty much your scorekeeper for the past several months with Tura. What I'm seeing right now is we are a little under budget for donations, grants, and reimbursements. There's been a budgeted amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, and so far, year-to-date, we've collected a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Interest income, we're at about sixteen thousand dollars, a total budget amount of thirty thousand. Please note that we're now earning five percent in a local government investment pool, which is really, really good. That's the best I've seen in a very long time. As far as materials and services, we're under budget by two hundred and eleven thousand, which is pretty significant, given it's October. Capital outlay, that's the one that's very much under budget, and it has to do with, we had set aside three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for land acquisition, and that purchase, I do believe, never really materialized. Grant programs is a little over budget, and it's only because we had a grant pass-through that occurred earlier this year, and so we'll probably correct that either with a resolution or a supplemental budget. Excuse me. Miscellaneous improvement projects of three hundred thousand dollars, we've never spent a penny of that. So total capital outlay is six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars under budget. We currently have an outstanding for long-term debt, uh, long-term borrowing reserve of seven hundred and twenty-one thousand. The way this budget has been set up, I do believe it was intended to pay off that loan before the end of this fiscal year. That's the seven hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar payoff amount. We have seventy-three thousand, five hundred dollars set aside in contingency. It has not been touched. And our total ending fund balance for Tura is one point five million dollars. Any, any questions on the budget to actuals?
Now, is that one of the grant pass-throughs or payments? Is that associated with Gateway and the title transfers that we got?
Um, I think it was Mount Graham Garage, if I recall. What does it pass through?
Member Panamara? Yeah, I'm looking at the third line under revenue donations, grants, and reimbursements. So the year-to-date is a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, and the total budget is two hundred and fifty thousand. So sixty-two thousand shy. Um, right, but we have till the end of the fiscal year. And I'm just wondering, is that money, is there money coming in?
I have, I need to understand what those, what was budgeted for, for that piece. I don't have the context to that, so I have not been tracking whether or not we've been collecting the grants.
Uh, it looks like the mayor has her hand up.
Oh.
Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you, Chair. Hey, I just wanted to ask what the overage on the, on the grants was. You mentioned there was a slight overage on, I think it was probably the, I mean, I'm guessing that you were talking about the beautification grants.
Did you say overage?
Yeah, I thought, I thought I heard her say that there was a slight overage on the, on the beautification grants. No? Well, I was logging in at that time, so probably just a crossover mix-up. Thanks.
Um.
I would like to say I would like to go back and review the minutes of the Tura when the budget committee was pulled together for this, so I have a better understanding of what is still out there to be collected for the grants and reimbursements or donations.
Member Panamara?
So maybe you mentioned it already. So grant programs, it looks like the total budget is a hundred thousand dollars, which makes sense. That was the, you know, the pass-through. The, yeah, the beautification grants, that's what.
Rehabilitation grants.
Yeah, that, those grants that we've been doing for the last few months. But uh, it says two hundred and eight thousand. So did you, maybe you explained it, and I just blanked. The hundred and eight thousand that went out was for something else?
It was the reimbursement grant. That's what I'm thinking it was for.
Okay.
For Mount Graham? Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Okay, and then maybe when we created the budget, either we didn't know about it, or we put it somewhere else.
I mean, we definitely knew. They have been expected in the previous fiscal year.
Perhaps.
So I can, I can go back and research that and get you a definitive answer as to that. And as I look at this, the grant programs, it's very possible, I look at the rehabilitation grants, there wasn't anything budgeted for, but we do have that, that I probably have been placing it in the grant programs line item.
Okay.
So.
So, I mean, just as far as, just, I mean, do you see any problem areas or things that require attention? It's just a matter of getting things lined up.
Not at all right now, and it's, it's just October. It's start, start paying attention probably in January this year, but I do know that we will have to pay attention to the grant programs expense line item. That's something I would like to have corrected before.
Okay. Okay, and that's that second line under capital outlay?
Correct.
Okay. Cool.
I have a question.
Mayor.
Um, I thought, so we were talking about the rehabilitation grant or the beautification grant, and I thought that that was budgeted for a hundred thousand. So it seems to me, it sounds like, unless I am not understanding what we're talking about, it seems like there's two, maybe two line items put together.
Correct.
Okay. That, that helps me a lot. Thanks, thanks so much. Do we know how many, how much in grants we have allocated for the rehabilitation? I'm just wondering if there's any balance left.
Uh, thanks. That'll, I was gonna bring that up in a subsequent item, but I might as well just mention it now. We, we had one more dispersment this month or, or late last month of about ninety-seven hundred dollars. Ninety, ninety-six, eighty-seven for the Talent Club. And so that's brought our, our total of dispersments recently to forty-two thousand and the uh, of course, there were some early dispersments, and so the, the total expenditures in that line item were fifty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-two. So we still have a couple of parties that have not submitted invoices or had work done. There's still some parties that are having work done, and, and we can anticipate some additional expenses, but the board at a previous meeting was aware, after having awarded grants to about eight different businesses, that we were pushing the envelope on that budgeted amount, probably exceeding it slightly by a hundred and three thousand dollars. But what I'm discovering is that people, even though they may have asked for fifteen grand or proposed something less than that, they, they may not realize all of that expense. In fact, that was the conversation I had the other day with the owner of the Talent Club. She probably wouldn't spend all of it. So we'll, we may either come in even at a hundred thousand, we may have some additional funds available if the board chooses to reopen conversations about maybe one more business or, or somebody. I have two that are in the queue, although I told them that we've sunsetted the program. They, they may, if there's money available, they may ask to be reconsidered, or be considered for a first time. That's kind of where we are on that one.
Um, so I don't want to make too fine a point of this, but did we sunset the program? I mean, I, I know we thought we exhausted the, the funds, but I don't remember, like, did we do a formal action? I know I missed a meeting, is why I'm asking, so.
There, there was a motion to sunset, and so there would have to be a motion to reopen if you choose to do that, but.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. It'd be nice to get photographs of all the improvements. I, I've been really impressed by some of the work that's been done.
Any other questions for staff about the consent calendar? Member Clark?
So we're gonna pay off that seven hundred and twenty-one thousand in debt. We're planning to do that this fiscal year, you said?
That's what it's been budgeted for.
Okay, and we have, we have, uh, it's like we have funds to do that.
Correct.
Okay.
And if it's possible, Tessa, just, so we've had informal conversations about this, and once the debt's retired, we, there will be a certain amount of money still available that is what you've discussed at earlier meetings, and that's what will be the subject of the next item four point two, just to kind of get some direction as to how that might best be spent, or what your intentions are, what you'd like to see happen. And that's why we're trying to go over the the financials before we have that conversation.
Member Panamara?
So just to clarify my, my memory, my understanding of the, the, the loan, the seven hundred thousand dollar loan from OHCS was in anticipation that we would continue and that we would do more work since there's no more TIF, tax increment funding coming in, that, you know, there's, there's no ability to repay this. So basically, it's a wash. We're basically giving back the loan, saying we couldn't use it. Is that, is that understanding make dollars and cents?
Plus interest.
It's not debt, debt retirement?
It would be retiring it, plus we would, we'll pay back the interest that's been accrued on that one.
Okay, so it's a, it's a wash for us. More, yeah, okay.
But there will be a balance, will there not, once the debt's been retired?
Um, there will still be, there will still be approximately seven hundred thousand dollars still in the bank account after the loan has been paid off. If you choose to go down that direction.
Because of the previous stuff, that's just previous money. So, so this loan basically zeros itself out. And this is the previous money that we've had all along, that we've, you know, been thinking about using to help the eventual gateway side development. Okay. I'm up to speed.
Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion. It's so quiet tonight. Member Panamara?
I, I moved to approve the consent calendar. Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? There are none. The motion passes. So Tom, I can vote, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, item number four is items from the executive director. Item four point one is update on revitalization grant applications and dispersments. Did you want to add anything to?
Just, just reiterate, you know, that the intention of the program was to improve the appearance of businesses, enhance access to businesses, improve the marketability of the businesses, and as they say, there's been eight who've applied and whom you've awarded money to. And just recently, we made a dispersment to the Talent Club after they completed the cement work fence. And there's still a couple of things yet to do, but they were extremely happy to have been reimbursed from the business side, and everyone else that we've awarded checks to have been pleased and encouraged, and it's a great program. We, we have made a commitment to Mr. Lawrence. His building is being looked at by the Architectural Review Committee. He may, you know, he made, made it in under the wire, and there's money being reserved for the improvements that he's asked for, and, but they're, they're making some recommendations to him with regard to the materials and, and architectural relief of the building. Seal, because it.
Seabrook's Corner.
Seabrook's, Seabrook Store, Seabrook's property. So I would expect that once he's got some direction from Architectural Review Committee and revises the estimates that he'll start work, or maybe it's weather-dependent too. We'll have to wait and see. But we are still waiting for work, other work to be done on the Gather. And Cafe and Bistro, biscuits and violas complete, art pops complete, Malkman Garage is complete. Uh, we're just waiting for one or two others to either get started or finish, submit their invoices, and then I inspect them, and then Tess and I reimburse them.
Member Greider? I thought I read in the recent news and review a lovely article from, I think it was Business Alliance. Um, but it was encouraging businesses to apply for grants through Tura. So I'm assuming that was this grant that it was speaking to. So now are we clear? I just want to make sure we're clear that it has been sunsetted, or is there something else that?
Yes, no, it has been sunsetted. There were, just as, as you were arriving at that conclusion, and we were up against a hundred thousand dollars in budget. Uh, we did have two people apply late, and I accepted their applications with the proviso that only after the board decides, you know, by motion to reopen, and, and we have a better idea as to what money remains in that budgeted amount, if any, then they, they could be considered, but it's not, it wasn't a promise. It was simply, um, you know, you want to submit your application, I'll, I'll have it on file, and then we, we're just gonna have to wait and see what transpires.
This is the only program that
Correct.
that would have been referencing it.
Was it on the front page?
Maybe it started on the.
Cause I think Ron wrote that.
It was very long. It was, it was pretty long. Um, and it was great. And then it was also mentioning some different, like partnerships that have happened this year, but there was just a, a part in there that said, yeah, that businesses are encouraged to apply for grants through Tura, so.
And that's a recent article?
In the December one.
The December one, and it, was it differentiating between beautification or?
Well, that was the thing. I, I think it really just said grants through Tura. So that's why I was like, it didn't really specifically.
Yeah.
So.
Well, we, you think you know what that's about, Hector?
Board. I believe that, that information that went into the talent news and reviews may have been submitted earlier in November. The November publication date was the second week of November due to Thanksgiving holiday. So that could have been old information that they published. So that's just my, my guess, since we, the city was in the same boat and publishing information early.
But this is a great segue into the next item, which is our invitation to you to provide us with some direction in areas of interest that you think uh, could be candidates for Tura Financial Assistance. Ellen has already alluded to one, and that has to do with the preparation of an RFP, a request for proposals to attract development to the Gateway as, as we transition away from the, the housing mission that's currently being pursued. So we, you know, other, other things that have come up more recently, I will just say that as we've moved into the holidays, we've become, we've gotten more and more requests to use this building in addition to the community center, which raised some issues with, with us relative to its integrity. And, and the fact that it's a historic structure, and so we did have an analysis done initially to determine, you know, it's, it's integrity or it's, it's structural integrity, I guess. And uh, the recommendation's coming out where don't use it during snow events or severe wind events, and there is some palling and some deterioration associated with foundations and so forth. So Tessa and I started discussing the possibility of, of addressing the structural elements of this building considering that as an option for Tura going forward, as well as charitable donations associated with the how, the historic society, which Tessa's actually affiliated with. And that might be something you'd like to take under advisement or your consideration as well.
I do see the mayor has her hand up. Mayor? Oh, you're still muted, Mayor.
Hey, thanks a lot, and Tom, great, a great topic. Um, two things. One is, I, I hope that we do a goal-setting session sometime in the near future to talk about what we still need to accomplish and make sure that we, I think you alluded to it when you said, make sure that we have enough, you know, funds to complete the RFP process and, and all, any, any prep work that we're gonna need, or consultation fees that we'll need to get that done. Um, I hope to see that done through a goal-setting process, and then if there's any additional funds to talk about other, other potential uses. On the, as far as the building goes, or or grant writing for Town Hall, which is an amazing idea, and I think everybody will be excited about that. I thought that we, I thought Tura, like, I'm still, I'm, let's see, I can't recall who actually did the assessment. I know that Tura originally had the funding for it, but I thought that they assigned the project over to the city, and I can't remember whether or not the city assigned. I know that happened. But I can't remember or not whether or not the city assigned it back to Tura and Tura executed it. And, and, and then if so, no matter who is in charge, was in charge of the assessment piece, would we still want to move forward with Tura for the grant writing? Does that make more sense than you, than having the city write for the grant? Like, what is your thinking about that, Tom? I'm curious.
Well, I'm gonna let Tessa tell you about the assessment first, and then my opinion second.
Okay, I recently learned about a talent Town Hall Building Assessment Report that was built, was written in twenty nineteen by George Kramer. And I And I have it right here in my hand. I haven't had an opportunity to sit down and really study it. I've gone over a glance through it. It outlines a number of different items that need to be repaired within town hall. It does not take into consideration the structural element of town hall. I expect
We stepped, then we go further and we had ZCS engineering do the assessment. It was superficial and
Yeah, yeah, the first assessment was superficial in nature and what, from what, from the report, it indicated it's, it's, we need to go a step further. And so I reached out to ZCS last week and requested a quote on a more robust structural engineering of town hall. So that's where we're at.
And this would be, so a more robust assessment of town hall would probably be the material we need to apply for grants successfully through a variety of different means, historic preservation being among them. And Tess has actually been doing a lot of the research or investigation associated with that. So we'd have to take, you know, step by step to get to the point where we, we have the justification for pursuing grants or the, the evidence we need in order to kind of sell the, the project and proposal to granting agencies. Whether the city does it or Tura, may just have to do with capacity. Whether we hired it out to have somebody write the grants. I know Tessa, at this point, Tessa's kind of pumped about the whole thing. So she may find time in her schedule to, to pursue that.
Mayor. Well, we're sure glad to hear, hear that, even if it turns out it's a capacity thing, having that somebody championing, championing the idea is super helpful. So we're grateful for that, Tessa. I, what I'm, what I want, my next question is I recall we set aside 250, maybe $275,000 for that, for that assessment of town hall. It was actually originally to do some work on town hall, but but the assessment proved that maybe quite a bit more work was actually going to be needed to be done. And it sounds to me like that that's where we're headed. With that said though, I'd want to know if we exhausted that budget. And it sounds like it would take some research to find that out. Because I, you know, I know we did a motion, we had a motion for that item. And then if we were going to need more funds, I do think that more funds to continue the assessment, I do think that we'll need to contemplate whether or not we'd want that assessment to be part of the grant for additional granted funds or whether or not we wanted to allocate more funds either from Torah or from the city to do more assessments. So I think, I think if we haven't spent it all, there's some more to spend. But if we have spent it all, that we need to talk about how, how we would do that next level assessment and how we would pay for that.
And, and that's why Tessa thought getting quotes would be, would help us kind of put us in the ballpark somewhere, at least know what the expectation would be, what the cost might be. And then of course she's also bringing out the, the Torah budget, so we have a better handle on, on what's remaining.
Sounds good. I guess what I'm adding to that is maybe looking whether or not we exhausted that line item so that we can discuss further where, you know, where to allocate from at that point, if that line item is exhausted.
As far as that line item, that may have occurred probably four years ago, probably at the time of the assessment report. So if you set aside, let's say $275,000 and it didn't, and you did not spend it on town hall, that it simply rolled over into your cap, your beginning fund balance. So that $275,000 that you may have set aside initially is probably still in fund balance that we have with Tura, which had been in this case reallocated to land purchases or to miscellaneous improvements in the budget.
Yes, that makes sense to me. I, I have seen that happen over the years many times. I just would wonder if we did spend it on doing the assessment, which I can't imagine George Kramer charged us that much money for the assessment or any, any evaluation since then. If we did do that, then, then that sort of exhausts the decision that we've already made. And I think a new decision would be in front of us. So I, I do, I do hope to find out how much did we make a motion for and how much did we spend of that? And, and is there, is there a balance from that motion? That's what was approved. Just as added information with the discussion.
I'll be happy to research that.
Wonderful. Member Penamara?
I'm, just as a point of interest, I pulled up the last year's budget from, and it does have a section on town hall renovation. And it says exactly what you said, mayor, that said last year's budget appropriated 250,000 for the town hall renovation. In addition, Tura signed an IGA with the city in late 2019, tasked the city with managing the project. However, consultation with the board, the Torah board staff believes it's more appropriate frugal to spend 20,000 on a project that will allow the city to do more due diligence. So that's, that's in line with my memory as well as just to, you know, I'm not sure how much we need to really investigate what decisions were made. I think it's like what needs to be done to bring town hall up to usability and safety and all of that. That's where, that's what I'm interested in.
Okay.
I, I just want to say, I appreciate that point counselor a lot. And I agree, right? Because that's ultimately what the outcome is. But I do think that earlier in our earlier conversation, there were funds that were unidentified. And I do, I would like to see those funds identified so that we understand where we're at in that decision and whether or not we need to approve, you know, additional funds or additional, and where that funding would come from. And I'd want to see us do that in a goal setting session so that we can look at all of the project holistically. I, I don't want to shortchange the work that we still need to do on the gateway in terms of getting a developer in there. And so, yeah, I'm hope, I don't want to, I don't want this conversation to discourage that investigation. I think that would be some important information to have.
Okay, well, that might lead to a budget amendment subsequently and but you'll have that, that background before you approach any changes, so.
Member Penamara? So we're talking about, I think priorities. Or is that, am I getting ahead? Are we talking about priorities of what's been?
We were, we were asking for your input relative to you know, directions you'd like to see us go. And this is a pretty clear direction that you're giving us.
Yeah, I think I would just say, I think the mayor just said, I, I'm not sure. You said not to shortchange the gateway, that's what I clued in on. I, I still think that Tura's first responsibility is to redevelop the great, the gateway.
Right.
And that's, that's the number one thing, that there's money left over from that, that's great. I think the, the restoration of this building has always been shared with the city. And, you know, since Torah doesn't have any more money coming in, except whatever we may get from grants. I still think that
I don't, you, you have a figure in mind for preparation of RFP? It doesn't seem to me to be a significant.
Wondering about also site preparation and additional engineering, anything else that might, might need to happen. We, we want to, I, I think in discuss, discussions past, it was really important to make the parcel as attractive as possible to a developer who would implement our vision.
Maybe outcome from our, our peer application too. So we'll, you know, our, our goal is to try and use that to
Absolutely.
Prepare the site, but it may not cover everything that we
Yeah, yeah. So I think it's like, kind of like after that, we'll see, see what money is, is available left over, if you will.
Yeah, can I just add one more? I'm sorry to keep jumping in, the Zoom is so awkward. I, I just want to reiterate what I think is the benefit of doing a goal, you know, like a sitting down, looking at all the things that we need to get done in 2024, including items that we still are going to discuss tonight, start to discuss anyway. Looking at all the items together, prioritizing them, evaluating them for cost analysis. And then, and then, and then prioritizing is really what I'd like to see us do. We're down to a small amount of money. And I, I, rather than spending funds a piece at a time to be more careful about, you know, just the balance that we have and the work that we have in front of us and making sure that it's all going to be afforded before, before we start to spend it again. So that's really what I'm, what I'm suggesting. And I think, I think member Penamara just said that, but I just wanted to reiterate it.
And this is something you'd like to do after the first of the year or as soon as possible.
I, I mean, I don't think we're going to meet again this month, so probably after the first of the year.
Right. Well, we're running out of time. The last item I wanted to introduce you to is has to do with the discussion about the Gateway Army Transitional Park and reoccupancy. And we may not have enough time to discuss this and this may be something for you to simply consider the way that I've introduced it in the way of a staff report. I have had informal conversations with some of the council members with regard to access and its agreement with the city. The access agreement is set to conclude a year from next month, so January of 2025. After digging into the agreements with access and also the one that we hold with the state of Oregon, it appears that we can't necessarily dictate to access how they fill those trailers. There is, there are statements in the agreement that they will fill the trailers, populate the trailers with both Phoenix and Talent Fire survivors and only other candidates after they've notified the city and, and vetted those parties. But they fall into low income categories and, and in some cases indigent. There are provisions in the agreement that allow us to encourage them to kind of move things along a bit. And given the fact that we have a deadline or a conclusion to this process, we could very well develop a strategy that, that starts to move this process forward and, and moves trailers off the site by the end of next year in favor. Well, and, and it should be understood, I mean, I'm not trying to be callous here, but I think we're, we're trying to relocate the occupants of those trailers and, and they, and recognize that camp trailers are not necessarily a long-term solution to people's habitability. And so access is required to monitor the conditions of the trailer, trailers on a regular basis and notify us if there are any that have significant problems, in which case we can either fix them or remove them. Those are provisions in the agreement. The, again, they should be notifying us if they have candidates for those trailers that don't meet the Talent Phoenix Fire Survivor criteria, but might also need housing. And I don't, they have not notified us of, of that, of that circumstance just yet. So I did have a conversation with Steve Lambert from the county. You might recall the county had similar setup at both the expo and immigrant lake and gradually had to encourage folks to leave pending, pending their, you know, relocation and, and reliable housing. But it, it does take time and it's requires some degree of patience and persistence. Maybe I'll just leave things at that and, and see if you have any questions or would like to for me to provide you with more information. Steve Lambert was willing to come in and talk to the board a little bit about the transitions that they went through and some of the challenges that they experienced in, in moving people from immigrant lake and, and the expo. And then I think I need to have an ongoing dialogue with access just to make sure that they are alerting us to, to changes with the trailers and the people and excuse me, and, and placements.
Uh, member great. I remember in your report, there was something about, so we're not able to ask them to stop if there is turnover to not move new families in because there's a waitlist. But have you had, it sounds like maybe you haven't had that conversation with them, but I would think that at some point they wouldn't do that anymore, right? But we don't know for sure that
Well, the preliminary conversations I've had with them, that 51 of the 53 trailers are occupied and there, there is a waiting list still. So they have candidates that are part of a long-term recovery program that have identified a desire to be placed in those trailers.
Well, at least a cutoff where it's like, if they are able to start moving folks out, then they're not moving new families in.
Well, I know, and that's what, that's the conversation I had with some of, some of the council members. Is it, can we ask them to not refill the trailers? And the agreement indicates that we can't dictate that. But if we would like to, I won't say, well, I can say force their hand a bit or just, you know, encourage them to move forward, that there are ways that we can encourage them to do that and enter into amendments to the agreement so that we can, we can promote that.
Uh, mayor.
Thank you. Tom, thanks for bringing this up. I, I think that your suggestion about engaging Steve Lambert into the, to the discussion is a great idea. What I envision is maybe you and Steve and the representative from access to sit down and talk about, you know, the time, the time, you know, the curve for getting to that, to that date when it's not just the contract that's up, but it's also the emergency order at that point. And so we all, you know, from the beginning, when the conversations happened with access, they were aware that what makes gateway project possible is the emergency order. And so if we have a reminder conversation about, you know, we need to be done by that time, because that's when the emergency order is, is, is over. And, and it would take the, the vote of the council and, and maybe, maybe more. I, I, I don't think, I think there might be more to it than just a vote of the council to extend that emergency order for that purpose. So I think that if they understood kind of the challenges and the timeframes that are needed to, to resettle and, and be finished at that time, at least for them to have a deeper understanding. So is that something you think you could, you could convene?
I'm sorry, I
A meeting between you, Steve Lambert and the representative?
I'd be happy to do that. Joe Volmar, Steve Rose with the, both with access. I can, I can certainly do that in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, that would just give them an, a, a access and a chance to, A, be reminded that the emergency order is over January 2025. I think it's January, it might be March, but
It's the, it's arranged for January 2025. That's when the agreement ends. And so I would assume that was tied to that executive order, that emergency order.
Yeah, I, or, or it was, the agreement was to end three months before the emergency order was going to end. I'm not quite, I, I, March, March sticking in my head for some reason. But anyway, if they, everybody has sort of a lay of the land before we really start discussing how to move forward. So we can get the So we can get the, um, you know, get the other process, uh, at least starting to plan for the long-term project. Anyway, I know we're running out of time. I just, I thought that might be a good place to start. It's just for everybody to, to know what the dates mean, actually.
Happy to do that.
All right, great.
Member Clark?
Yeah, just to add to that. I mean, it seems like we need to, um, kind of feel out what the possibility of is a, of a contract amendment would be, and then maybe a little upfront thinking about what kind of terms, you know, would we like to see in there that would, uh, meet our needs to have some certainty about how the project moves forward?
Good idea.
Great. Awesome. So that sort of concludes four point three. Uh, item five is items from the chair or board. Does anyone have anything they need to add? Member Penamara?
Just kidding.
Well, if you call on me, I'll just say, uh, Renaissance Flats opened. I attended, um, the mayor gave a wonderful speech about bringing our families home. Um, there were several other speeches, and I'm glad to see that open. I'm hoping to see, uh, Telomobile Estates, uh, reopen soon as well. So folks have some permanent housing to go to.
Thank you. Uh, item number six is written communications. There are none. And item number seven is adjournment. So if there's nothing else, I will adjourn this meeting at six fifty PM.
Can I ask a quick question before we bail on this? Um, is this the same Zoom link that we're gonna use for, do I stay on this Zoom link for the council meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
As yes.
We just may have a different, Anna's gonna take the lead on it. I'm sorry.
Where was that, Tom?
Yeah, she's gonna preside the meeting. I'm, I'm not presiding because sometimes I have technical glitches at